I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, we're back for a second attempt. So the next thing to do is approval of agenda. Anyone want to make that motion? All right, Nick makes that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
He seconds it. Any discussion, anything we need to change or move around? You're good?
Nothing I'm aware of. Yeah, I think it's pretty good.
Great. All those in favor? Uh, Kim is...
Aye.
Yep. And Steven is good. All right, so unanimous. Great. The next thing is public input and announcements. Anybody want to talk? Okay.
Anybody virtually?
No? All right, we're good there. Ooh. Nope, there's somebody who wants to join. Okay, the next thing is approval of minutes from 3:20 24. Could I have a motion for that, please?
Make that motion.
Oh, good, Len's here.
It's here.
Uh, second?
Second.
Good seconds. Any discussion? Anybody need to have anything corrected or changed? We're all good? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
All right, they're all good there. Unanimous. Okay, now we're on to student representative update.
Bronson, you're up. Hi. Since I last represented the student body to you guys, I have sent out a Google form, with the help of Ms. Thompson, obviously, to the ninth and 10th grade advisories to ask them all what they would like me to represent them about, what they think the school board would like to know. And I had a few very open and neat questions, like some class offerings they would like. And there were many different responses. I got a total of 22. And many of... Some of them we already have, like a music independent study. They'll just have to take that next year. But some common themes we saw were a few people wanted more science electives and a few people wanted more like history electives. And I know that those teachers would like them too. You know, they've been cut in recent years and we've had fewer and fewer. And another one was technology, like programming or design and just... That would be a great addition.
And because right now, we don't really even have a computer lab at the... Like, all we have is the Chromebooks now.
No, we do have a computer lab. We've got a computer lab where...
But there's not computers in it.
Well, students bring their Chromebooks and they plug in and they do have...
And BJ could talk about that a little bit, if you wanted to.
Yeah, for the... Are we speaking to the programming or what were you looking for?
Yeah, like an intro to programming class or like that kind of...
I know that Ms. McCullough is doing a lot more with the Lego robotics. And I know she has a class at the middle school level and it's growing into the after-school program. As part of the tech department, I have the Edison robots. We have 20 of those that can be signed out by teachers and students. We do have a student who regularly signs those out or has regularly signed them out in the past, besides my own daughter. So there is availability.
But not really... That's just... But not necessarily coding, right? Or is that... You know, it's engineering coding?
Um, those are coatings of both. The robotic stuff is all coding, stuff and things. You don't... There's plenty you can do on a Chromebook with coding. So it's not like you need a specific type of device.
Yep.
I think it's just a time and personnel.
Are those classes for credit or are they like extra after-school or...?
Uh, the middle school classes are... Is just a middle school class that students can sign up for.
Right, of course, there's not a credit there. But I'm at a high school. Are there any technology credit classes that kids can take for credit?
BJ, is it okay if I just answer a little more?
Yeah, Jody would be able to answer that one better.
Oh.
And I was... And sorry, I was throwing BJ more the question of what does the computer lab physically look like? Which it's monitors and keyboards where students bring their Chromebook and they plug it in. So it is like a desktop setup. You're just driving that with your Chromebook.
Well, I guess the question...
Yeah.
The reason I asked my question is because...
Jody can speak to the course kind of piece.
Yeah, because is that what they're thinking? That they would like to take a course that they could get credit for at the high school level, right?
And I think the 10th grader said that. And I know I have... I would like to take a, like, intro to Java class. My few friends that like...
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so it is true that in the past, within maybe five, six years ago, we did offer Java HTML courses. We did phase those out due to low enrollment. So the last time we offered both of those courses, we had less than five students in them for multiple semesters. And we just are at a financial point where we're unable to offer our courses with less than 10 students enrolled. If we did have more kids enrolled, then it is something that we could look to offer in the future. We currently are offering a digital citizenship class. It's the technology class we're offering at the middle school level and that is all about responsible use of the internet and social media, which we found, you know, is a really important thing at the middle school level. But the teacher that is teaching that is... That position might be transitioning to more of a math position next year. So... Because that is also something, if we look at our data, that there's a high, high need for. And so I will be happy to update the board more on where we're going with that.
Quick question. Is that a required class in middle school?
Uh, it is not. It is one of the electives that we have at the middle school level. So if you're curious, you can go on the Mill River High School page and you can see listed, there's a high school course of studies and then there's a middle school course of studies and all of the middle school electives are on there. So right now, actually, rate after rate, all of the middle school kids will sit down with their advisors. The seventh grader is going into eighth grade and then the sixth grade teachers will sit down with the future seventh graders and let them pick their top five electives. And then our school counselors will work really hard to get them at least two, if not three, of their top choices. So those are everything from woodshop to creative writing, financial literacy, digital citizenship, world, music. You know, I could go on and on and there's some really interesting ones, but digital citizenship is just one of the options right now.
Gotcha, thank you.
So definitely, good to know that students are interested in something like that and we can look more at how many people really are and is it viable? And something to think about when finance rolls around. Is that something where we need to add a position? For sure. Sorry, Bronson, that was... You were only a little bit into your report.
Thank you. And then I also asked them extracurricular activities that we don't have that they would like and any other comments in general. And on both of those questions, they seemed pretty satisfied. Like... So that was pretty good.
Yeah, right on. That's good to hear.
Yeah. And then I would tell you about all the extracurricular stuff that's happened and happening, but it's too many to name because it's... Everything's going great. Except Interact Club is having a blood drive after school on the May half-day. I'd like to invite you to all to come and support the Red Cross and the Interact Club. That's May 13th. I believe we start at 12:30, going to 5:30. Please come.
Awesome.
Did you say the Interact Club?
Yes.
And what is... I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
We're affiliated with the Wallingford Rotary Club and we're a community service organization.
Okay.
Um, and thank you. I just want to go back to the technology piece and the classes that we heard students are interested in. And I just... I've heard some feedback from some tech too that... Is there a possibility also that if students aren't really finding the current tech offering incredibly interesting or like stimulating, they might not have been like eager to join in and like, you know, what was once offered as a class? I mean, that was why there was low interest at the time. So yeah, thinking about like how to kind of bring some... As we were to bring some tech things, which I think is an awesome idea because I heard from students that they would love that also. How to kind of bring it up to date and have some current offerings that make sense for like this crazy, rapidly changing tech world that we live in.
Yep, absolutely. Bronson, anything else you wanted to share?
Uh, I just remembered, Mrs. McCullough is introducing a robotics team tomorrow for next year. And so that should help with this, but again, it's not a class and that would be helpful. But so I'm very excited about that.
Still worth thinking about, yeah. Good to know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bronson.
Thank you. And I, you know, that is the... We interrupted you, but I really appreciate it because that's a conversation that we weren't going to have. So I really appreciate your feedback and you coming in and bringing us information because it's really helpful.
For sure.
Okay, the next thing is intervention update.
Hey, Deborah.
Well, hello. I am going to present, so wait just a second here and hopefully you will see my screen. And great job, Bronson, inviting everybody to the Red Cross Blood Drive. But yes, one of my other hats is the advisor for the Interact Club. Let's see, is something full slide show mode? I don't think it is. Is it?
Not quite yet.
Uh, start slide show. There we go. Okay. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Deborah Tharkabash and I am the MTSS Literacy Coordinator for the district and I have been the LNEC team lead. You will know a bit about that as we go through this because that's going to be one of my goals. My area of focus, I work very closely with Jody Stewart-Rubin and I have been involved with the Early Learning Networked Improvement Community, which is what LNEC stands for. Hence why we always say LNEC since the beginning. And you'll hear a bit more about that. I also work with curriculum alignment and literacy data as the coordinator for MTSS and literacy. So why are... Why am I giving the presentation? What am I hoping you're going to take away from it? I want to really share the trajectory of our literacy work over the last three years, from 2021 through 2024. I want to share a little bit of our literacy data with you, begin building an understanding of how MTSS connects with our work, particularly for those new board members we have, and then provide a brief intervention team overview. So the LNEC. This began as a teacher-initiated project. We actually, the intervention team, had read several things that Dr. Nell Duke had published and we saw this little blurb from the AOE, the Vermont Agency of Education, that came out that was inviting schools that they were interested to work on a project with the AOE and Dr. Nell Duke. So we were excited about that and we signed up as a team to do that and several other. Teachers also signed up with us. This is something that's sponsored by the ESSO, the Council of Chief State School Officers. Anyway, you know, education, we love our acronyms. So we worked that first year with Dr. Duke. The second year, they had a change of the professor that they were bringing in because the idea is that they wanted to give teachers access to working and publishing research professors in the fields of both literacy and in numeracy. There is also a math strand that was happening at the same time, but we were only involved in the literacy one. Anyway, so we began our work last year with Dr. Sharon Wollpole and then this year, we continued to pay free to work with Dr. Wollpole, but they added Kate Bochut as somebody to just work with pre-K. So in the beginning, the aims for this, the very first year with Dr. Duke, were things that our teachers did not feel were reasonable. We had pre first kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers that first year. We were only doing that very beginning part. And their goal for pre-K was that by the end of pre-K, that all pre-K students could plausibly represent the initial sound in a meaningful text and that by the end of kindergarten, all students could read and write any regular consonant, vowel consonant work. And as we've gone along, their goals have evolved for grades one, two, and three and they revolve around fluency primarily and when you should get proficiency at the grade level. So that first year, we were involved. We were able to take a team in 2022 to Oregon that was funded by the CCSSO to see how they were using plan, do, study, act cycles. We also got a mini grant from the CCSSO and were able to buy a lot of books, what they call print, affiliate texts, books that really help young students pay attention to text for our pre-K and some decodables. And in 22, 23, we, Jody and I, really worked closely together to be able to align the PLCs, look at the new research that was... That has been out there around the science of reading. We actually had all these PLCs look at some of the materials out of the University of Michigan that Dr. Nell Duke had worked with. And we... Then at the end of the year, last spring, we hosted regional leaders and teachers from across the state and the Vermont AOE came down and Dr. Wollpole was brought up from the University of Delaware. And the goal of that was to be able to expand the LNEC because it was really very small in Vermont. It was quite large in other states, particularly New Jersey, that we were working with, but it was small in Vermont. And this year, we've had over 60 educators now across the state that have joined us. All of them began, heard about it first either at that site visit or at a presentation that Jody and I did for curriculum coordinators. And so then this year, we've worked with the vertical alignment of our curriculum K8 and our local common assessment plan, known as LCAP, of course, as an acronym, by implementing the Bookworms reading and writing curriculum. We launched last summer, could offer PD for our teachers. And Dr. Wollpole worked directly with teachers. In August, she came to us. She worked with us virtually in October and came to us again for two days in January. And then we've been asked by some of the new schools that have just added into the LNEC, that they want to come and do another site visit and sort of see how our schools are doing with Bookworms. And so right after break, we've got some teams of teachers visiting our schools that are going to actually be up in Shrewsbury. So all of this work, besides Jody and I, has also been guided by teams of teachers. I also worked with a group of teachers that represents all grade bands in all schools. We've got Shannon Merritt and Katrina Getney and Tuck Davis and Erin Wright, representing our K2 band. Joan Galusha and Julia Wyman, representing our 3-4 band. And Bonnie Pritchard and Brina McDonald, representing our 5-6 bands. And so we've worked with them around our PLCs, about what PD is happening, working on curriculum maps, being updated. And it's just been a really great way to get... To keep an open conversation going. And we meet monthly with that group. So how are we doing? What's the early data sort of showing us here? So one of the indicators that we introduced this year for this is called DIBELS, which is measuring fluency by words correct per minute. Web student read, are able to read. And this unreadable graph in front of you, which I'm sure you can't make heads or tails out of, is comparing scores in September to January. So in second grade, we increased about 29 points, percentage points. Third grade, 25. Fourth grade, 50. Fifth grade, 21. And sixth grade, 21. Those are average scores increased across the district. It's really interesting that our largest bump was in fourth grade because fourth and fifth grade are what research has shown Bookworms has been most effective with helping struggling students in those grades. I wanted to look longitudinally at what we have been doing on our local assessment. So I looked at the STAR 360 data for grades. So we would have three years of data about. So third grade for our 21, 22 year, when we were just beginning and we're only focusing on pre-K1, our... The number of students that were within the average range for our reading scores was 17%. By the following year, when we were doing a lot of district work, it was up 64% and 61% this last year. This is the same group of kids across the district that we're following, not third grade every year. And so the same thing for fourth grade. You know, scores were at 20% and 35% before they would have had the impact. The last two years, we have 52 and 49% fallen within that average range. Looking at growth, this is percentile range. Remember, 50% is absolute average. That you're looking at a range, anything between 40 and 60 is very solidly average. So in the, you know, in the fall, we've got the scores over here that are going 29, 59, 42, 33. And they've grown by seven, 10, five, and nine for an average of nine points. Just from September to January. And our K1 scores have done similarly, gone up about eight points. Could highlight Wallingford Elementary that actually went up 12 points, which was really great. But our scores are running 42, 67, 60, 58. So very solidly average and above. So what does that have to do with Vermont MTSS? So now that Bookworms and our literacy work is fitting in beautifully with this because the whole definition of this MTSS framework is that both general and specialized educators are working on academic, socially emotional, and behavioral difficulties by improving learning for all students and doing that improvement through increasing differentiation and intensifying assessment, instruction, and intervention. And that's basically the definition of what Bookworms has been doing. It is a program that has 90 minutes of literacy work and has a 45-minute differentiated block built into it in addition to that 90 minutes of time. And it would be called an RTI block. So our intervention team, I'm just going to introduce them here very briefly. We have Mary Ellen Keparski, who's been splitting her time between Clarendon and Wallingford. Mary Beth Monahan, who is at Clarendon. Kathleen Harrington, who is full-time at Wallingford. Joan Latuca and Julia Wyman are splitting their time in an interesting way. They've added a reading block, I'll talk about on the next slide, and are providing intervention. Joan Mose at Clarendon, Wallingford, and Julia, full-time at Shrewsbury. So that shift really happened because Bookworms is so geared to the needs of students at exact levels that our schools that had combined grades really needed separate instruction for kindergarten and then for third and for fourth. So we added a reading block to an interventionist schedule. And at Shrewsbury, they took their point for a local position and combined that with what we were doing for a full-time position up there. So we have a full-time equivalent of two people at Wallingford, one and a half at Clarendon, .6 at Shrewsbury, and at Clarendon, .5. Just a quick note about some of the ways we're trying to look forward for next year and further build some of our intervention resources to support Bookworms. We are adding some additional screening options for next year with the DIBELS Next, which is a little more advanced version of DIBELS. We're using DIBELS eighth grade right now. We're adding an additional structured decoding program for that 5% of students that statistically are not going to be helped by the programs that are happening in Tier One and Tier Two. We're adding a structured fluency program. It's a rewritten program. I know some of... A few of you with education backgrounds may have heard of it in the past, but Dr. Marion Wolden's finished rewriting it and we're excited about that. And tech sets for fluency and comprehension groups because that's a big need. So my voice is getting up. I have my teacher voice here at the end of the night. So I asked my interventionists what their favorite things were about working in intervention because, you know, sometimes we, as all groups can talk about some of the challenges and struggles and this and that. And I just wanted to end with a few of their words. You know, favorite part of it is helping a child who didn't think they could read, read a book that they then can bring home and share with their parents, even if that book is just a CDC decodable. And like other favorite part of helping upper grade students, finally enjoy that feeling of reading smoothly and effortlessly so they can think and understand and discuss what they read rather than spending all their time thinking about decoding. And my favorite thing about being an interventionist is trying to figure out what each learner needs at just the right time so they can become confident, successful readers and exit intervention. Although at times, it's bitter sweet to exit these students. The pride on their faces and the joy and relief of the families, I have a lovely collection of notes called "Thanks", make it extremely satisfying work. And this year, I found it extremely gratifying to help older students, more reluctant readers become completely enthralled in great books to the point that they're coming in to read, talk about books on their own time. And last comment was, I love getting to be a safe place for learners. Each day, they get to show up just as they are and whatever they do is enough. They don't need to compare themselves to their classmates. They don't need to strive for perfection. They just get to be who they are. I get to guide them through the process of becoming big readers with books they love. Even hall moments are pretty cool, too. So can I meet my goals? Did you hear a little bit about a very fast overview of our last three years of literacy work? The literacy data? A little bit about what MTSS is and how it connects? And hear a bit about the intervention team? I hope so. But I'm happy to answer anything or Jody can also, of course, answer any of this. I'm going to stop presenting so I can see people. Maybe I'm going to stop presenting. There we go.
Does anybody have any comments they would like to make? Yeah, Nick?
Only because you can't see me, Nick Flanders. Deborah, I think it's great presentation, by the way. A couple of years ago, when the LNEC first started getting presented to the board, I was ecstatic about it. It sounded like a great program. It's obviously reaping some fruit, which is fantastic. Question one. I believe now the LNEC team is starting to talk about what it can be applied to math. Is that true?
So we have had PLCs this year that have been looking at our math program. The literacy and math numeracy LNEC programs that are... that are happening through the state are going to change next year because the CCSSO isn't going to be sponsoring those anymore. So I think they'll be more like a support group. I, so anyway, I think some of the work that we've done has been a little different than what we would have done if we'd been able to have the teacher power to do both strands of this.
Sure. And then question two, if I can remember it. Oh, how far, how far does that LNIC reach? Like it starts at K, originally it was 1 and 2, and then it was K through, how far does that reach?
Pre-K to 3 is where they ended. Bookworms goes from K to 5. And then there is a middle school Bookworms that we also implemented this year that goes 6 to 8. So that's, that's, you know, a new section. Of course, some of our fifth and sixth grade teachers have the added challenge of having to, it's really structured quite differently. The middle school program has like different amounts of time that you're supposed to have than the elementary ones. So, but yes, so we really, this program, the, the fruits of what we've done are affecting pre-K 8.
Thank you.
I have, so my first comment is, I forgot that we were doing this tonight. And I randomly was talking about the, how, because of the grade differentiation within Bookworms, how key our interventionists are at doing that. And literally, you know, a teacher saying, there's just not enough, there's literally not enough time in the day for me to do both of the grade groups. So we have to have it. And not this fiscal cycle, but last budgetary season, we heard a lot from parents being like, why are we spending so much money on interventionists? Because in their mind, if we spend money on interventionists, we're helping just the bottom. When I think just, especially in this case in particular, we're showing that this is lifting all boats.
Absolutely, it is. And, and we are, you know, really using some of interventionist time to do Tier 1. We wouldn't really have been able to implement Bookworms in either of the mountain schools without the support of the intervention team.
And then my-
And just a reminder that a vast majority of our interventionists are funded by federal grant funding that can only be used for Tier 2 intervention. So the tiniest little bit of that actually comes from global funding.
And then, so my two questions, my two questions are, so we've spread out now. So we had the most, you know, focused teachers that were like opting into the program, having great success. Now we've spread out to, you know, the whole district. So the question is, is how is that working? And do we have enough support for those folks still? And then the second question is, is with the, you know, when we heard the middle school talk about block times and how they're, in Bookworms, the block times don't match up to the actual times for the curriculum. So going forward, how is that, how, what are we going to do to adapt or how, not we, but how are you guys going to adapt that to, to work with the middle school?
So the first part of your question was about how we were going to keep this going forward and how it was going.
Yeah.
Some of the data, I showed the initial data. Hopefully it's showing that, you know, it, it's making a difference even in this first year. Our teachers are in many different places with it. So for some of these teachers, this is year three of the journey and they were really working with some of these same materials last year, running this differentiated reading blocks. For some teachers, this is really the first year they've done anything with it. So, you know, it definitely is a multi-year learning curve for, for teachers, even though it is something that's a pre-structured program. It still is a bit of a, it's a bit of a learning curve anytime you're getting new curriculum. And so we are going to continue on supporting in our PLC times and in our early release days. Teachers, as they go forward, we have, there's the same kind of PD that was offered last summer for people who are implementing will be available this summer. For, for, you know, the middle school problem is a real problem. It's a 16-minute program that it's set up. We curtailed what we were, you know, what we knew they could get through in 45-minute blocks. Obviously, they can't complete an entire year's program. And that's, you know, that's not something that's very easy to solve because of how many teachers are working both in the middle school and in the high school. And those blocks are 40-minute blocks for the, the high school. But anyway, I don't know. Jody, if you want to say anything more about that, we realize that's an issue.
Yeah, I would just say that it is an issue that we are working on potential signaling solutions for. But I would say in the interim, teachers being able to get through to the 3 of the units opposed to all four is still an increase in research-based best practices, an increase in rigor, an increase in curriculum coordination, which research shows that, you know, doing things the same way year after year helps kids really master skills quicker. And so it's, even if we have to do with this, if this way, which is less than ideal, it's still curricular improvement. But we are looking at how to solve that. And just, you know, I just want to say a couple other quick things at fourth grade that Deborah highlighted. That's our kindergarten COVID room that we were so worried about in the beginning with their data and how we were going to dig them out. So I just really want to highlight the, the good work of all of those teachers and the kiddos setting up. And just say that Deborah also, in the last two weeks, took the time to email a whole bunch of the teachers about their individual data and growth. So when we talk about how teachers are in different places with this work, I think it's so important when they are seen for their hard work and celebrated for that work and keeping them motivated with what they're doing.
The other, the, my, I have a, a question that I just remembered that I wanted to ask about it was that, just in, you know, we've added a lot of curriculum just in general. And if we have like a new teacher in the setting who's getting, one, I'm just learning how to be a new teacher and I'm learning all this curriculum at the same time. What are we doing as a district to help them specifically?
So there definitely is PD. But one of the strong parts about Bookworms is it's different than most programs in that it actually also has daily lesson plans and routines for teachers that have already been written for them. And so in that sense, it's a program rather, you know, sometimes curriculum is relying on teacher knowledge and pedagogy to grow, to really understand all the instructional practices about what would make it work best. Bookworms is designed sort of backward from that. Instead, it's designed so that all the, that all these instructional practices are just embedded in the pre-done lesson plans. And teachers learn from that and see their success and are able to be filled rather than we, you know, doing it the other way around. In that sense, it's much easier for a new teacher coming in than when you hand them something that doesn't have all that lesson planning come with it.
And I would echo that for other subject areas to a lesser extent, still better than just sending a new teacher in and having that, the expectation be that they decide on their own curriculum. So with Eureka, there's a curriculum calendar so they know where they should be for each month of the year. And there are educator and student videos that they can access throughout the year to learn the language around each unit. For TPI and for mystery science, it's the same thing because our curriculum work group and all of our grade level teams have taken release time to work on these curricular maps for the year. A new educator coming in not only has a mentor and their grade team that they can work with and can choose a strand of professional development throughout the year. But they also have their curricular calendar with all of the embedded links in it so that they know what they should be doing when. And I, you know, having once been a new teacher without a curriculum, I think that that's so much more supportive than just going in and deciding what you think you should be teaching.
Being handed the common core.
Right.
And then, okay, good luck, which was, you know, I think a lot of people's new teacher experience.
And so much better for our, you know, as opposed to when they all get together into a seventh grade classroom and they've all had different learning experiences.
Does anyone else have any questions they'd like to ask? Great. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Still doing a great job, you guys.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that anything that helps steer students to enjoying books is unbelievably valuable, critical.
Yep.
Given the tech, screen, internet world jungle that we live in.
Well, and, and literacy is hugely important, but gosh, there's so many add-on pieces of literacy, like increased empathy. Because if you're reading fiction, you're getting to know how people, different people feel and think.
Exactly.
I, I think it's hard not to emphasize literacy enough and the joy of reading. Yeah. I was an English teacher, so.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You keep that one up for me.
Well, I'm, I'm with you 100%.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So the next thing's up is our sports update.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Hi, Kim.
Hello, so I can't see everybody that's there, but Kim and Ari, athletic director, 7 through 12 at Norver. Some friend shared on the screen what I'm going to be talking about. So I had this prepared for last week. I'm assuming the number is still correct with our number of students, 7 through 12. So spring semester, Norver, we have 374 students. And we have 123 student athletes participating this spring. So it's 33% of our population. And you can see on the screen the numbers participating in each sport that we offer. Underneath that, I have the numbers of participating students from 2016 to last year. I was not able to get the number of students we had in school for all those years to get the percentage. But this is our second highest spring season for numbers since 2016. If you go down, just looking at some projects that we're working on with buildings and grounds. I know at the law school meeting, you guys approved us to put in some new bleachers in the middle school gym. Thank you. Those are original bleachers to the gym that was built in the 90s. So just a couple other things we're looking at in the future. We also did some maintenance to our basketball hoops back in January. That's all been completed. And so next to look at is the maintenance of the basketball hoops in the middle school gym. Those all need to have the same maintenance and safety measures done that we did in the middle school gym. We are working on this summer, trying to get both the gyms painted to give them a little facelift. In the middle school gym in particular, the mats that are at the end of each, at the court, they've just been cut out by students and not, they just look bad when people come in and they're visiting our school. So looking into getting some replacements for that done. And our bleachers will be ordered within the next week. And that project, once school is out and our events are done in both the gyms, we will have the bleachers removed. And then sometime in August, maybe even the beginning of school, the new bleachers will be installed to be used. So I'm really excited about that. Big picture, some of the same stuff that we've had on there, the new one and Bronson talked about extracurriculars that students are looking for. One in particular that a student is really trying to get going is a bass fishing team. And that is a VPA-sponsored varsity sport now. It has been for probably five or six years. So to get this sport to a varsity level, we are for procedures and policies. They have to do a club sport for two years and sustain and keep the numbers. With bass fishing, you don't really need to have a big group of numbers, you need four people. And you can either fish from shore or in a boat. And this student has secured a coach and someone who has a boat. So we're going to be diving into that a little more. So hopefully this fall, it'll be a club base and we'll look forward to moving forward with that as a varsity sport in the next year or two. And then I just want to talk about elementary sports. Mackenzie Belondo is our district elementary AP. She is tonight at a rec meeting for our spring sports scheduling. So this will be our first season of softball and baseball at the district level. We've not offered that before. So we're really excited. We have 71 elementary students who have registered. You can see the numbers for 3, 4, and 5, 6 in softball and baseball. We will have two teams of each and we have four coaches ready to go that are volunteering their time to work with our student athletes. So it's really a work in progress. We've not done this before. So getting a lot of guidance from community members that have run the programs in the past. And Ruttlem Rec and Brandon Rec are helping with softball and baseball scheduling for our teams to compete. And they will practice and hold their games at Norver. So, you know, they'll be using our fields for those games. And I just wanted to talk about, you know, 123 student athletes are participating in spring sports this season and eligibility started. And if students did not have a, two or higher in a class, in their overall class and their transferable skills grade, they were put on mandatory probation and they needed to attend study hall Tuesday and Thursdays for an hour after school. And of the 123 students, we only have 13 on academic probation. And I think that's a pretty good number for 123 students. And those students have to complete three study halls. They will be then given a form to have all their teachers sign off that their grades have improved and are above or below. And then they would be able to participate in games and events. Right now, they're just able to practice. So if they don't have those abilities, do they continue with the study hall sessions and continue to practice and not dress for games until their grades are where they need to be? So that's, I think we talked about it last time we presented, just holding the students accountable because classroom and grades come first before, you know, being able to participate in the extracurriculars. So kind of a quick rundown. Spring season goes by really fast. We were supposed to kick off today with two varsity games. The weather did not allow us to do that. So we've got some games slated for next week, over break. Our unified basketball team has had two games and they're 2-0. I would really encourage anybody to come out to one of those games. Their next one is April 30th here at Norver at 5:00. And all of the games are on the event calendar on our website. So if you wanted to check out something that's going on, there's usually something every day starting next week. So we're in full swing.
No pun intended.
Yeah.
You don't have that complete fun. Does anybody want to?
I just, I just wanted to say that the article on the unified bowling team in the Herald was, oh my God, I almost cried. So it was great.
I coached them for the last-
I know you did, Kim. Yeah.
So brings over to Anthony.
Yeah.
This is great because I coached the team this winter. And it's, it's like no other. The atmosphere, the student athletes that are participating, the coaches, the fans. And it's just a really great, great environment to be a part of.
Just a quick notable, I think it's been a great upswing, not only spring but fall. The uptrend in participation in sports has been fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I have to give a lot of credit to our coaches who are putting in a lot of effort outside of their seasons to get students that's prepared for their in-season, you know, sport seasons. Thank you. Yeah, I have to give a lot of credit to our coaches who are putting in a lot of effort outside of their seasons to get students that's prepared for their in-season, you know, sport seasons. And the students committing to putting in that work and, you know, both, both that is the student and the coaching, both putting in time to start improving our sports here at Noriver.
And, and huge kudos to Kim for the work that she's doing to try and coordinate all of that and support all of that while it's happening.
Yeah, and having, you know, expanding to different sports, like, you know, that, I mean, I.
Bass fishing.
Everybody knows that I might be a little biased towards ultimate, but like having twenty-six, like, kids show up for that is like crazy good. And then like.
So we'll have a varsity and a JV this year.
Yeah. Well, and, and you're fighting against enrollment. And that's a, that's a challenge across the state to be able to offer more when you have fewer students is hard. It takes, it takes more effort.
But that, and then, you know, climbing's not a varsity sport, but like that's another place where maybe people that didn't fit in with the other sports get to do that. And then if this bass fishing thing, that's like another thing that, you know, there's a lot of kids who don't wanna play that.
And I think it was one of our biggest winter groups as well. I think Zach had almost thirty-five students participating. And a lot of those students were doing both the ball, rock climbing and basketball, rock climbing, snowboarding. I think they just were doing both of that.
And the other thing that I really appreciate by having so many kids in is it, it does give, you know, people a better, you know, stick for trying to get, you know, better, you know, grades and other things that, you know, sometimes you don't have that incentive. So if kids wanna be doing something, it's great to be able to give them something to, you know, strive for. So I really appreciate that you're doing the, the, the more difficult part of that.
I also wanted to say, I was happy to see the emphasis on elementary school participation because, I mean, I haven't been tuned in, but for a long time, it was really up to the parents to sign kids up for community teams or, you know, different teams. And having that go through the school, I think just, first of all, it feeds your, obviously, your varsity JV teams, et cetera. But it also enables a lot more kids to participate. So I think that's great, too. Good job, Kim.
Yeah, 'cause I think that was, again, two budget seasons ago, that was the conversation we were having where a lot of the club and, like, it was just getting out, people were getting outpriced. They couldn't afford to do the, the stuff. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to, to do that. And they're doing a great job.
Yeah, excellent.
And I think that a couple of themes emerge as you hear from our teachers, as you hear from Kim and from Deborah. Conversations we were having two years ago, we set a path and said, okay, let's do this work. And we have dedicated folks who are pitching in and doing the work. And we are seeing that play out in positive ways now. Sometimes it takes a long time.
Yeah.
But having the conversation and then having the right people, you know, makes a difference. It pays off in the end. There are lots of things we don't get right. But when we get the feedback and we know the direction we wanna go, we do make progress, too, so.
And then my last question is, and it may be a little bit more for Tim, but is like, so we did, you know, grounds improvements, we did work on the baseball fields and stuff. And does it feel like the maintenance of those things is going well?
So we used some of that money that was allocated to our athletics to resurface our baseball field and our softball field in Newark. If you've not seen the baseball field, it looks amazing. We did work to the middle school softball field, so that was actually a playable field. So now we don't have to double book the varsity field and we can have games going on on whole fields. And then right now, we're working on the middle school baseball field to get that ready to be played on. As a varsity field is just too big for our middle school and elementary kids to play on. But yeah, I think, sorry, Mackenzie. I do just, we have the tools to keep it maintained to the best that we can. And just to keep working with the guy who gave us the updated fields is, is in our best interest.
I think, are we, we're probably all good now if you need to go deal with that. We're great.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good, good reminder for the board, too, because we have some new board members, that a lot of that work couldn't have been done without board support. Through budget process or, or through some of the other conversations that we've had.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you so much, Kim. The next thing is camera access control bid?
Okay. So, so we have a grant that is focused on safety, I think it is. And it's a substantial amount, which is great. When I first started this project, I had a portion of the grant that I was asked to, can we upgrade the cameras at the elementary schools? The cameras at the elementary schools and actually here are using, the elementary schools are using something called Lorax. And the cameras here are using HIC Vision. In two thousand nine, both of those were deemed by the National Defense, something, something, where they shouldn't be used in federal and state institutions. Not only that, but like the elementary schools, I could not get them to work reliably. So needless to say, they are not a viable tool to be used for safety or anything in our school system. So I started looking around for other tools that were viable, that were really enterprise-ready, could be used. That's where I came across the Verkata doors, the Verkata systems they're making. I got a demo of them last year, a camera. I even got a demo vape sensor. And I worked very closely with Joe Hoffman, our, the security person here. And found that this product was very enterprise-ready. One of the most important parts about this product was that it could be used, the investigation part of it, part of it was really good. Wasn't just a good camera sitting up there. It did some facial recognition, it did some following. There was a lot of elements to it that really made it his job much easier and made it a much better product. It's also a cloud-based product, so we're not trying to house anything inside. It is a subscription product that we're gonna be using. I only had a set amount of money, so I was just picking and choosing, work with the principals as to which cameras that would be the, the best. And then it kinda switched to Yorn, you get the whole grant, which drastically changed the dynamic of the product, project. So I was able to add, replace most of the outdated cameras all the way around at all the schools. I was able to do a much larger installation here. We have two cameras here that are being well-used in two of the hallways. And Wallingford, previous to this grant, got their own grant and upgraded their school systems to this. And even within one year, that has helped fill considerably with behavior. Because he put it in there, he was able to monitor things. And he instantly saw a change in being able to monitor behaviors and get that underway. So what I did is, once I had the full grant, Verkata also offers door systems. So the door swipes that we have and the intercom systems. Right now, we're gonna be reusing all the door swipes, so the card and swipe readers are all gonna stay the same. We're gonna upgrade the controllers in the background and we're going to upgrade the intercom systems. What that allows everything to do is it, again, allows us to go cloud-based. So that a principal will have full access to full logs of seeing who's gone in and out of the building, when. They can update, they can unlock a door remotely if they need to. So they can, if they're out of town and someone needs to unlock it, they can. One of the problems that we've been running into is like after-school program has had to let parents in. That has been a troublesome thing in trying to give that person access to unlock the door. With this system, we can assign them an account and say, here you go, you have access to see who buzzes at the door, you can unlock it. All of that information is logged. So every camera check, every buzz in and everything else is logged by the user. So there's some really good analytics to here. That said, that's what the two projects are. So you have a Verkata door project, which will replace the controllers and the intercoms. Allow us to create accounts for anybody to buzz in. This front door has the computer, has several people who try and do that. The cameras have been upgraded at each of the schools. I am, if anybody wants to see it, I can show you guys the map. I can't put it up on the board publicly, but that's where it is. I worked very closely with the Verkata vendor to get three, three companies who came in. Two of the companies did a site visit. One of them did two site visits, came down after we did the doors. He came down and did a second one. That's company that did two site visits, also is the company that did Wallingford installed theirs. They do doors, they do safety systems. Oh, yeah, there's the other thing. We will be getting, adding a door swipe to Clarendon on the far end. Shrewsbury in the back, so they can access the preschool playground. And Timothé behind the gym will also have a swipe. So that whole area behind the school, there's actually easier access for teachers to enter in. So with the door that's also in there. Safety Systems of Vermont is the company I'm going to be recommending to do both projects. Even though there were two different RFPs, I told them, because it's two different projects, but it's one, one bid, awarding it to both of them. Happy to talk more, but so my recommendate, before I make a recommendation, is there any?
Well, do, do your.
Get your motion.
Bug ya.
Man, I've been out of practice for this. For the new board members, I used to be a board member for quite a while. So I'm gonna ask the board to make a motion to award the camera and door project to Safety Systems of Vermont. Do I have to put the amount in there?
Uh, we can.
Yeah, we can. The amount of one hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Like I said, they put the most effort in and they came in within budget.
So BG's looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, great. Now we're in discussion. So my first question is, like, with those old cameras, one of the reasons why they're so popular is that you can go with any vendor after. Like, those cameras just work and then you can change the backend. Are these cameras also the same? So like, if your cloud-based software service stops working, because, you know, whatever, they go, they disappear sometimes, can you then take all the equipment that we now have and use another vendor without having to reinstall everything?
Because it's subscription-based, because of the investigations features that they have built into it?
Proprietary.
No, it is proprietary.
It's proprietary.
But this is a, a fairly large, established company, too. So, you know, while, while there are some concerns, the concerns I think would be more, and I, I see Len has something he wants to say. The concern is more thinking about ongoing long-term cost than I think it is the vendor disappearing. Len?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, a reminder for the board, this was a grant that we saw float across our desk. And this was, this was not even a state-sponsored or shit, the state maybe shared it with us, but we had to log into the federal system to access this grant. So very different from a lot of the grants that we regularly access. A little bit more work to do and more hoops to jump through. Jody took that on last year and navigated the system. And we were the only school system in the state awarded this grant. I think there were only two places in Vermont awarded this grant. One, I think, was a municipality. So we worked really hard to be able to fund this in a way that didn't put a burden on our taxpayers. Because we saw that safety was a concern, but we also saw that budget season was lining up to be challenging. So, you know, we are looking at this as a great place to update our systems at a very fiscally responsible way. Steven?
Yeah, so why do we need, why do we want facial recognition, cloud-based AI software in our cameras? Why, can somebody explain that to me, why that, with investigative ability?
So you could have scenarios where you say something like, maybe a student has gone missing and we are concerned about the safety of that student. To be able to find the camera that last saw that student in ten seconds versus let's take three hours to try and review video footage. You know, if we had that scenario now, we'd never go to the cameras. We'd be getting as many bodies as we could searching parts of the building. With this system, we could pull the student up and find the last camera that saw the student and it would take minutes. You know, so from a safety standpoint, you, you get a lot of efficiencies by being able to do that. I know the, that is, can be a scary thing because you go, oh, wow, now these cameras are all paying attention to who's going where and doing what. Well, there's a huge safety incentive to be able to do that. And it is a closed system where that information is not being shared with anybody who doesn't need that. We have some policies in place for how we access those systems and who can access those systems. So we put some safeguards in place so that I'm not sitting at my desk going, gosh, I wonder what BJ's doing today. Let me see which camera BJ was on. That would be inappropriate and that would not be allowed under our policy, if that makes sense. So I, I hear the concern there, Steven, that, that when we start talking about facial recognition, we start thinking about invasion of privacy and things like that. You know, with other things like search and seizure, we also have an understanding that when students come on campus, that they can be subject to search and seizure if we have a reason to do so. So folks do leave some rights at the door because we have a duty and a responsibility to keep people safe. Do you have a follow-up to that, Steven, or is that, does that kinda get at what you were wondering?
I just, it just feels like kind of a big move to me and I feel like I don't know anything about the product or the company.
One thing I will say, and I'll kind of back up in this. As for other companies that are using this, I do have a listing. I think I put it in here. One of the people we're competing with for installation time this summer is Middle Bear, is it Middle Bear? Montpelier, I believe it is, school system, where they're having an install that is four times the amount that we're putting in. Much bigger. And they went all in with even more, even more sensors and even more cameras. So it's not just us that are looking at this. Verkata is pushing into Vermont. There's a couple of schools are using it already, but there is a few more who are jumping on board with this.
And Carol had a question. And then Len, we'll get to you in a second.
Okay, well, I wanna thank Steven for bringing that up because I, you know, I wasn't thinking about that aspect of it. So it made me wonder, where are, I mean, you're not gonna tell me exactly where, but are they mainly hallway cameras? Are they not in classrooms or?
That is a good question. Yes. In the, the primary place that these cameras are going in, in the elementary schools is outside. I think that's safe to say. Some popular places inside. Wallingford did a lot of inside ones because they were having a lot of behavior issues.
They have a building that's really, really hard to see anything without walking a long distance and going around a weird corner, too. I think their layout makes it.
Familiar with that. And Phil, who's the principal over at Wallingford, and myself, both worked in Fairhaven during Jack Sawyer time, which I will tell you is a very scary and unnerving thing to be in a school that has had a threat. So being able to cover and being able to go to the police and not try and say. So being able to cover and being able to go to the police and not try and say, here, you go, you can live monitor this. The way we have to do that now is not as reliable or able to do it. There is kind of ways that we can make it happen. This is straight off, here you go, monitor the situation live. So that is one big component of the cloud-based system.
And then the high school is?
The high school, we have, high school, we are replacing a lot of the cameras that are currently in place, which are several outside cameras, definitely cameras monitoring the bathroom areas. I will tell you right now, every bathroom is monitored.
Inside the bathrooms?
Sorry, good point. Good, good clarity.
Entrances of the bathrooms?
The entrances to the bathrooms.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Which is, which is a common point of investigation. Yeah, and, yeah.
General mayhem.
General mayhem usually happens when they're. This, we do have added cameras around to catch a few other places that are able to cover things. Honestly, there was something stolen out of the front office. The camera wasn't working there because it was some old D-link consumer one. We're definitely pointing one in there.
For your community value, the parents say specific child who loves to turn the lights off in the bathroom on stand.
There you go.
The, the camera specifically on stand.
I have one more.
And I think Len, Len had maybe wanted to chime in too. Go ahead, Len.
I think I'll, I'll try to be brief. Having been an assistant principal in a school and having gone through some of the stuff that BJ mentioned, we always use the cameras as an investigative tool, not as a monitoring tool. And I think that's, that, that's critical to understand. I, I had access at my desk, for example, to the cameras, but I didn't sit at my desk and watch the cameras. But they came in extremely helpful when, you know, I'll just give you a couple of quick examples. Altercation between a couple of students. One student said, well, I never touched him. He kept pushing, 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 and I never did anything. Well, go to the cameras and wasn't quite the case. BJ talked about the bathrooms. We were having issues with graffiti in the bathrooms. And we have cameras outside of the bathrooms. So what we did was at the, at various times during the day, we had students and administrators and teachers walking into the bathrooms. And if they found graffiti, then we could backtrack to see when it occurred and then get an idea of who was coming in and going out. And what it did is it really helped us put it, put a stop to it. It really did. Because kids, you know, soon realize that if, if, they have to be honest. You know, we, we had situations where a student covered up one of the cameras, but the problem was the last thing we saw. I, I just can't, I can't speak highly enough of it for just the, again, not monitoring, but investigative part of it and then being able to sit down with a parent and say, no, 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 this is really what happened in spite of what your son or daughter may say. Here it is. And it's tremendous help.
Well, I just, I was just wondering, it goes into the cloud, so obviously facial recognition. How long does it stay there? Is it saved? I mean, is it like forever or?
No, I think the, I'd have to double check what the policy is. I'm guessing it's probably like a thirty-day saved unless you archive the data. Unless you specifically say, keep this clip.
This section, okay.
It's always on a rolling amount.
So if you had an ongoing investigation, you would save something.
Right.
But if you didn't, you would just have on that rolling basis, you'd always be able to go back and check what happened last week. But then they would disappear automatically after that.
Like fourteen days, because I think we just had to do something about that the other day.
I don't know which one I had there. Which, either one of you can go.
Okay, I, I'll just say that I think that this, it's interesting listening to this conversation. I don't think we need to be squeamish about sort of personal liberty questions within a closed space. Like, kind of like when you go to an airport, you know that you're giving up some of your normal liberties. And it's kind of a good analogy, really. Especially given the things that have happened in schools in the last twenty years. Having the ability to do facial recognition, and I'll just say it, having the ability to monitor what's going on in the school, there's nothing wrong with that. It's not like you're using that information for nefarious purposes. And I'm, I'm taking your word, Brian, that there, you know, kind of intelligent policies that are protecting the things that need to be protected. But having that tool.
It's the board policy. So anybody that wants to read it can.
Well, I mean, to me, this sounds really great and could be a lifesaver potentially. And I don't think we need to worry too much about, you know, the civil liberties aspect of it, assuming that it's policed appropriately. So just my word of support.
Nick?
So I read all the, the information you provided, which was great. I looked at the website ahead of time, which was fantastic. So the tech aspect doesn't bother me. And again, everyone's talked about the policy, none of that bothers me. It's one hundred percent grant-funded?
No. There is a twenty percent match. So to access this funding, that was a, a piece of the grant that we had to be aware of. Because this is largely buildings and grounds type of work, what we would request is that we use our building fund to cover the twenty percent.
Twenty-nine thousand, five seventeen roughly.
Normally that would go through B and G committee first. So what BJ is bringing to this group, he's saying, we have a small window to be able to get this installed.
Which he had, which he had in his proposal. Running out of time, need to get this in front of everybody.
So if, if B and G members are comfortable with this going to the full board and that the full board approving this would be approving that twenty percent coming out of the B and G fund, fantastic. If there are B and G members who think, no, let's pause, let's take this to committee, let's have more of a conversation, we will do that if that's what folks want to do. Does that make sense? Because normally this would go to B and G first.
And then, question two. I don't see foundations listed unless it's covered under Clarendon.
Yeah, good question. Was there one out there?
Actually, there is. It's on the Clarendon map. And the, one of the cameras will be moving from like a, kind of a crushed little spot in Clarendon to the foundations building facing out. There is also gonna be one facing forward. I believe that was the case that we're gonna do. There was, there was two conversations.
Is it two, trying to ask if there's gonna be one inside?
There is not one set to be inside foundations. One of the nice things about the Verkata things is it can be, it's very, very scalable. Buy the camera, we plug it in, it's part of the system. Traditional systems where you have a hard drive locally, you have a set amount of cameras and once you hit that set amount of cameras, you have to buy another full hard drive unit. This doesn't rely on that, so.
Do you have, do you have any idea what an additional, like adding another camera or two? Do you have a ball, like any ballpark idea of what it would be?
The cameras, indoor cameras, between five and a thousand, depending on the quality of camera you're getting. And then there's, all of these have a subscription with them. So, and that's something I didn't mention yet.
And, and is that, correct me if I'm wrong, was that fifteen thousand was what we were ballparking? When it gets to budget season, three years out? So this covers three years. So we would have to be talking budget season, two years down the road. A fifteen thousand dollar ask to sustain this system.
If it, if it, if the license is that much in three years.
So the bulk of this work is establishing that and it would be a smaller cost to continue.
A year, fifteen thousand?
Yes, correct.
And the fifteen thousand, is that basically purely for the service?
That is for the service.
And then is this company contractors of that company? Or are they literally just doing the install of the hard drive and then they are gone?
Safety Systems of Vermont is a reseller and installation. They do fire things, they do safety doors and things like that. So they are a, so they're a reseller. I do know Verkata is working with Vermont. They're in talks about trying to do some consortium pricing. So there is a good chance that in three years, there might be a contract that is more statewide. So again, this is one of the reasons why I went with the company because they're really trying to do a lot with Vermont in general that way. There are some subscriptions, like Wallingford, I think they had that one year. So there are, if you look to the, so the finance committee, there's still be aligned with some Verkata stuff in there, but this whole system that comes with a three-year. So we have time to plan and adjust.
Anybody have any other questions? Does anybody have a strong feeling that we should send this to B and G?
I think we have forum right here, so we, we're, I'm okay with it. Are you okay with it? You're okay with it? Fine.
I was gonna say Steven's up there.
Oh, Steven's in there too. I can't, without the thing there.
I think you've got almost everybody from B and G here. I think you have everybody.
Except for Doug.
Except for Doug. Okay, thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, all the, can you take that down just so we can see?
Yes, I will stop doing that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If you're still on, the hybrid folks, we'll need to see.
Aye.
Len is good.
That was Len.
Yep. Kim's good. And Steven might be on.
Steven, yeah.
I don't know, I feel like I gotta abstain.
You can, you can, well, okay, so all those opposed? You can oppose, it's okay. Well, all right. So, and then all those that abstain? I think Steven's abstaining, he said it.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you, BJ. Thank you, everybody. PCB testing is mine. This one, I sent you the whole packet of information because normally when we bring things to you, we've got three vendors and bids and all that fun stuff. This is the state-sponsored PCB testing program. So I gave you the documentation of where the Department of Environmental Conservation had authorized the project and had signed off on the work plan and where the Agency of Education had granted the funding for this project. So I, I thought it was important that you had all that background information to, to kind of... So you understood the rationale for why I'm bringing you one, one bill, basically. So Harper Environmental is the group that we've been working with through that whole process and that was who was assigned to us through the DEC and that process of PCB testing. So I would ask for a motion that we authorize payment to Harper Environmental in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Would you like to make that motion? Carol? Second?
Second.
And just, just to put it out there really plainly and clearly for everybody, this is not our funding. This is funding coming from the state to cover this. So this is not our expense. But we do need to approve it because of the amount and the fact that it was unbudgeted.
And this is?
I'm sorry, is that, it says state approved?
Yep.
And then it's no, but that's us. I mean, what's the no on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me pull that up.
Maybe it's been approved since you signed this or something.
Oh, 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 that's, whether or not you have a vendor selection form is a no. Why? Because it's state approved.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. No, good question.
And this does not include the fixing of the problem? This is just the checking of the problem?
This was round two. Round one was covered and we didn't have to do any paperwork and no, nothing came through our business office because the state covered things and sent folks to do round one. Round two was if, if there were PCB levels that needed to be remediated, then we called Harper Environmental in to do that second round. Because only certain schools were doing that second round, they created a grant process to cover that second round. That was to, so round one, we tested the air to see if it was present. Round two, we tested to try and figure out where it was coming from. So next step will be remediation, once we know where it's coming from. That is covered, that is somewhat covered by the state and we have to wait and see how that plays out because those dollars are disappearing. And the State House right now is looking at a bill that would pause the entire program if the funding runs out. So we're in this interesting kind of limbo where we're waiting to see when Harper Environmental and the DEC get back to... Sorry, when the Department of Environmental Correction actually gets back to us with next steps and if there's gonna be money left when they get back to us with next steps. So we're in a little bit of a waiting game. Our end is done right now and we'll hear from them and we'll see what the funding looks like.
And they haven't given you a timeframe?
We, we hope to hear something from them within the next month or so.
And is it just Wallingford?
Clarendon has, Clarendon has been grant-approved for round two and when we get that, we'll bring it. Tinmouth, Shrewsbury have been paused and they are not tested yet, round one. Mill River, round one testing had nothing we needed to worry about. So, yeah.
And Brian, and Brian can certainly add way more than I can. But part of this whole testing process, there was a long line of needing to test, needing to test, needing to test. And then we started testing, not only us, but other schools. And PCBs started to get found and problems needed to be addressed. And all of a sudden, stuff went to the state and they said, we found problems more than we were anticipating and it's creating problems, we don't know what to do, so stop.
We might not be able to pay for all of it, so maybe we should pause until we know how to pay for all of it.
So, there's this big pause at the moment.
Because it wasn't just a few windows, it was Burlington needed a whole new school. You know, it was like, so, I mean, it was like, the levels are very different.
So now instead of expediting all the testing, they've kind of paused everything.
Okay.
It has definitely been an interesting process.
Yeah, it makes sense in a bureaucratic way.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Yep, that was discussion.
All right, so then all those in favor?
Aye.
Len's good.
Steven and Kim are good.
And Chris good.
Thank you, everybody. Next one's me too. Bringing this on behalf of Jane for Clarendon. We are reaching that point in the year where we stop making new purchases. Part of that has to do with the timeline of the business office wrapping up the books for the end of the year. And part of that has to do with, well, gosh, if you order something in May, sometimes it doesn't come in time to wrap things up appropriately. So we have a cutoff date for new purchases and Clarendon has some funding left over that they had anticipated using, but they have not used. So they are asking to transfer seven thousand, eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents into the capital items account where they could replace furniture from. So they have this funding in other accounts now that hasn't been touched and they would like to move it somewhere where they could make some good furniture purchases that are necessary. So I would ask that the board make a motion to approve the transfer.
I'll make a motion for that. Second?
Second.
All right, lovely. Discussion?
Any questions?
What kind of stuff, what kind of furniture are they gonna buy?
Largely chairs for kids, chairs and desks is really the bulk of what they're looking at.
We'll be disposing of the old?
Probably.
I just don't want to hoard bad things.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
Well, there was a room full of them here, apparently.
That's my only...
Tim has been fantastic about, should we rent, should we rent a dumpster? Fill it up, haul it. We have cleared out so much stuff in the last two years. When, when, when I took over tech many, many years ago, I wish I could find the picture again, we filled like, like, you think about the multipurpose room down here, ten feet across, the length of the multipurpose room of old tech stuff and got it the heck out of here. Tim has done the same thing with all the maintenance stuff that's piled... Tim has done the same thing with all the maintenance stuff that's piled up, so. You know, we wanna keep it clean because we've cleaned it up, so. Good question, good question. I think, uh, something that we've talked a lot about is, the big projects are great, but we still need buildings that are attractive, so the little things matter because when kids walk in the building, when staff walk in the building, if they can be proud of the appearance, it makes a difference. So, you know, Tim's got a commitment to keeping things, the little things tidied up. Okay.
Everybody good? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Steve's good, Len's good, great?
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody's good. All right, next thing is board goal review. So, for new folks, uh, one of the big things that we've done, really the last, like, the last two years, was try to retool the board goals so that they're more in line with what the board's responsibilities are actually and much less saying, like, one of the goals used to be, we need to have a GPA of this and we need to be doing, like, we need to have teachers in the room this many times.
Test scores will improve by four percentage points every year.
Right. So, not great goals, not really even, like, achievable goals, like...
And there's certainly not things that we can hold ourselves accountable for.
Exactly.
Bingo.
They were not, the boards were.
Right.
That's right.
And so what we did was, one, we really, like, tried to just consolidate and break down and try to figure out explicitly what are our, what is our job as a board and what can we do about it? And so, and how do we better, you know, project what we want to the, you know, to administration and to staff in a, in a positive way and in a supportive way? And so the goals that we have now are, and, and the, the vision and the mission are, are what we came up with. And these are not set in stone. This is one of the things, one of the reasons why we wanna be revisiting them kind of every few meetings is to talk about what are we, what are we doing as a board to meet one of these goals or something, you know, in that vein? And then also, so that when we go back, especially because we have a lot of new board members, you know, if we do need to have a retreat or something like that to say, okay, what do these goals look like that we're, we've been trying to attempt?
So, and to give a little bit more context, we have on our tentative schedule checking back in on June 5th. And then we have, uh, goal setting in, end of July. So the board would sit down likely at a retreat, a longer meeting, just dedicated to this, maybe on a Saturday morning. And, and we would think about, are there goals we need to keep? Are there goals we need to change? Are there goals we need to toss? Uh, tonight is really an orientation for the new folks and checking in on those goals. And then, like I said, June, we'll check in again on progress. So part of this should be thinking about, gosh, is there something we said we were gonna work on and we haven't and we should maybe renew our focus?
That's June? You're saying that's a check-in?
Well, tonight and June.
Tonight and June.
Yeah.
And so, like, one of the, like, in the, the last time we did a check-in, um, one of the things we were trying to figure out was, um, community engagement aspect. And then, now you're, basically, you're all new folks on that committee. So like, uh, how, you know, part of it was like, oh, we're doing a board newsletter, like, so we actually have to execute that, uh, as the board. And we're almost there, I, I think, and then, um...
I was wondering about that.
And one of the things that, and then the other part, I think we were talking about just generally, is like, the community conversations that were brought up at the, like, the Tinmouth. And, and so, part of it is, is like, thinking back to the past couple of meetings that we've had. How did we, you know, so if we're looking at, like, that section in particular, it's like, have we been doing those things or, and how, if we aren't fulfilling those things, how, what are, how can we do better? How can we make, facilitate it to, to work? And stuff like that. I know one, and just off the top of my head, I know that there were a bunch of people who were planning on coming to a community engagement meeting tonight, that were public members and didn't know that they, it was canceled, until I told them that it was canceled. So like, that's part of, like, that's a, I, I think one of the things, that's a principal thing, like, we need to make sure that...
Canceling a meeting, I think, presents more challenges.
Yeah, but we could put it, like, you know, in a, it could, but the weekly update, it should, we should've said, "Oh, you know what, Brian, you should go and, and tell the principals to send this out." Just because it isn't, it isn't in the calendar now, like, it's e, it's harder to find.
You have to actually go to the calendar to see it's canceled, yeah, in other words. Um, and, and hopefully folks did notice that principals did put tonight's board meeting in weekly.
Right.
Um, everybody did add that in, so I think that was good request. But something to think about in the future, if we cancel something, we need to, uh, go a little outside of our normal distribution to alert folks it's gonna be canceled.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I, it kinda goes back to what that, um, fellow, uh, Mike?
Yeah, Mike.
Was talking about was, you know, "I get too many emails about the yearbook, but I don't hear about this," so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's definitely one of the things that community engagement is gonna talk about. We, well, I can talk about it during my committee, maybe.
Great, great.
Great.
You know, I think there, there are definitely some things on here that, that, um, you know, Deborah was just sharing data with us. And we've tried hard to, when we have even Kim sharing numbers with you, you know, we've tried to work on that understanding data by continuing to bring that to you and that you're not just hearing from me, you're hear for, hearing from different folks about that data. We have a student representative on the board, uh, trying to bring back those community conversations. Um, I think, uh, and we also adopted a five-year facilities plan. So there are definitely some things on here we've accomplished. But there are definitely some things on here that we probably wanna spend some time thinking about. How do we approach those? When do we approach those? And, you know, are some of these maybe some good committee places to do the work? You know, I know Coral, uh, sorry, Carol, you were saying that community engagement is adopting some of this, or picking up some of this work, you know? If some things on here continue to be missed, we might wanna be intentional as a group and say like, well, gosh, which committee could do this?
Right.
Because if we, as a full board, keep overlooking it, you know, where do we put it so we make sure it gets done?
Well, yeah, and that made me wonder about the charges of the committees and who, how do, how do they get?
Yeah.
I mean, they're in the bylaws, but in some ways, they've maybe strayed from what the bylaws say. Because I, I remember when, and again, we could talk about this, but community engagement, for instance, originally was a new committee, never existed. And the purpose was to keep the individual districts feeling like they still had input when we went to the big board. Um, and now it seems that's not really the gist of what community engagement is doing. So the question is, should we change the charge? Or should community engagement be doing something different? So that's what we'll be exploring.
And personnel tweaked the charge a tiny bit. And we had a conversation, I even think at Reorg, we brought up looking at our bylaws. Um, and I think, I wanna say we did our bylaws two years ago in the spring. I think that was the last time we updated our bylaws. And it wouldn't hurt, you know, if two years have gone by, it wouldn't hurt to look at our bylaws again, update some charges if it makes sense, line the charges up with our goals. Um, because I think, we, we set these goals last summer, we didn't touch our charges. So I think, thinking about if those are aligned or not, those make sense.
And saying that some committees don't meet, you know, for a bound, well, maybe their charge could change, well, not to give them more work, but point being...
Maybe there are things they could do and make sense to do.
Right.
Yeah.
For sure. Lovely. Um, does anybody else have any other comments they wanna talk about for board goal review? Great, all right, now, committee reports. Personnel, Len?
I am actually getting it. Hang on. Okay. Uh, personnel committee met this evening and so we have some contracts to bring to the full board. And I'll go through these. The first is a contract, support staff contract for David Rumberg. For library assistant, study house supervisor, beginning in the next school year. One point oh full-time equivalency. And I will make a motion that we offer David a contract.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
David has been subbing in the building and even subbing for that position a little bit and we're, we're thrilled to bring him on board, full-time.
And this came about as a result of a retirement?
Yeah, thank you, Len.
Yeah. Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is everybody here?
Opposed? Okay, looks like we got everybody, thank you. Um, next one is a support staff contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is, um, an administrative assistant for Angela Shero. One point oh full-time equivalency. Again, this is filling a position that came open as a result of retirement. So I would make a motion that we offer Angela this contract.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion?
Where is...
This is, uh, Shrewsbury, we have another retirement there. Uh, and Angela's actually a parent of some students at Shrewsbury, which is great because she's a member of the community and knows the community. We're excited to bring her on board too. That is a very important position.
And has been filled more than adequately by the person who was there at this time.
Yes, who we will miss dearly.
Yes. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any who opposed, abstained? Okay, next one is a teacher contract for Jennifer DeCalle. DeCalle. A point nine full-time equivalency as a music teacher, no.
Yes, but not the music teacher, and that's a combo of two part-time positions together.
Yeah, so it is a mu, a position music, um, Mill River, Shrewsbury, Tinmouth. We're trying to combine some little pieces to make it a bit more. So I would make a motion to offer this contract to Jennifer DeCalle.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Jen, Jen is fantastic, so we're, we're happy to keep her around.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next one is a teaching contract for Holly Siget. Teacher K through, K through six, one point oh full-time equivalency as a school counselor. This is a contract through the end of this year and then we'll look at what may go for us next year. But at this point, this is just a, uh, contract to finish out this school year and the contract is contingent upon provisional licensure. So I would make a motion that we offer this contract to Holly Siget.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And this is a position that's been open since, I think, around September, maybe. We had a elementary person shift up to fill a vacancy at the seven-twelve level. And we've been trying to hire it, but, you know, a mid-year hire is sometimes hard for certified staff. We've had some close calls, but they haven't worked out. So we're, we're happy to have this in place as much as we can this year and that'll put us in real good shape for next year.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Thank you. Next, and again, for folks that, that might be a bit new, we have some coaching contracts. And what we have done in the past is rather than go through each of the contracts individually, these are for the spring coaching positions at the high school, middle school, and the elementary school. And so, Kim presents us with these contracts and usually we hire the slate of coaches as opposed to doing it individually. Excuse me. Brian, did you send out that, uh, schedule to all the board members or just...
If, if you got it, everybody got it. I shared it with the full board group, so hopefully everybody has that.
Okay, again, I think it's helpful for folks to understand that these salaries aren't just made up, um, that there is a, a specific, very specific salary schedule based on experience, based on sport, the number of practices, the number of games, et cetera, um, that Kim has put together. And so folks should have that if they wanna take a look at it. So what I would ask, or I will make a motion, to approve the slate of coaches for spring high school, middle school, and elementary school.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Only a question because I'm not catching it fast enough. What's the abbreviation TNF? What sport is that?
Track and field.
Track and field. There it is. It's getting late.
It is. It is.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. One more opposed. This is a resignation letter from Casey Burnham, who was a parent at Wallingford Elementary School. And this was dated February twenty-seventh. And in the letter, uh, Casey resigned her position effective at Wallingford, effective immediately. So I would make a motion that we accept Casey Burnham's resignation.
I will second that, uh, with regrets.
Thank you. Other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, and that takes care of contracts. Brian, do you wanna go into?
Yeah. Yeah, if you don't mind, so I actually, let me start with my easiest one. Um, I recommend that the board approve the renewal of our non-union support staff and bus driver contracts with a five percent raise consistent with the raise that our other support staff are raising, receiving for FY twenty-five. So I'd ask that somebody make a motion that we approve the renewal of our non-union support staff and bus driver contracts with a five percent raise.
I would make that motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
Any, any questions or...
Um, so other, are bus drivers non-union?
Bus drivers are non-union.
Are there other non-union staff?
Uh, so our non-union staff would be...
Just in general, huh?
Our, our two tech support employees are non-union. Uh, Debbie and Rebecca, our central office admin assistants are non-union. Our business office folks are non-union too, so payroll and accounts payable, um, those folks.
Okay.
Is it custodians to Brian?
No, custodians are union.
Okay.
No, good question. So it's a small handful of folks.
Okay, you want me to go? You want to go?
You gotta call it, Len.
I do, huh?
I mean, I'll do it for you, but it's still personnel, so I give it to you.
Thanks. So motion's been made and seconded, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, folks.
Abstained? Okay.
Okay.
All right, Brian?
So the next part is maybe a little more interesting because, you know, what we've done for the past several years is we've offered our administrators' contracts, and we've extended the same package that our teachers have had, just like we gave our non-union support staff that same package that our support staff have. We don't have that yet for FY '25. So I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve contracts for individuals for the years and the positions, and that we would come back at a later date and we could approve the amounts once we have that sorted. So if folks are comfortable with that, I would recommend that the board renew contracts for the folks that I had listed in our packet, and I can go through those. So for the position and for the years. So those would be the only things we're approving tonight, the position and the years.
Can we add to, and I'm willing to make the motion, can we add to the motion salary to be determined?
Yep, I think that's reasonable. So that would be Kristen Simonetti, Shrewsbury principal, two-year contract. I was going to recommend Jane Richards, but Jane has found a wonderful opportunity and will be heading to Rutland. Kalen Thompson, two-year contract principal at the high school. BJ Berant, the two-year contract director of technology and innovation. Teresa Sayer, two-year contract director of after-school. Tim Hart, two-year contract director of buildings and grounds. Maggie Ames, two-year contract assistant director of student services. Karen Standard, one-year contract assistant principal at the high school. And Coral Stone, one-year contract director of student services. Do folks want to do those all individually?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contracts. And what was the other thing?
Salaries to be determined.
Salaries to be determined.
As a slate or individually?
As a slate.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And Brian, this is what we were talking about earlier where we're trying to get the, we don't want to dither into getting the contract out, just out of fairness.
We want folks to not be in limbo not having a contract for next year.
Roger, and then we figure out the money once that's.
Because we want to keep good folks.
Right, I get it.
Yeah, and I think the other point, too, is it's around this time of the year when positions do open up.
Yep.
And, you know, if our folks know that they're booked into a contract and that the salary will follow, then, as Brian said, it's helping us keep the peace.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Another question. Oh, so I just, I'm trying to understand. So the support staff have a contract, but the teachers don't?
Yeah, they're staggered, so support staff are up next year. We'll negotiate next year.
And then the administrators' contracts are based on, essentially, I'm assuming, the benefits package is what you're talking about?
Yes, so, you know, to speak a little more broadly about that, too, you know, our non-union folks, like our bus drivers, we're going to give them the same healthcare package as our support staff, the same time off as our support staff. So we, just because they're non-union, we don't hang them out to dry, even though we could. We extend to them the same package that the most similar bargaining unit has.
And I think it's also important to keep in mind that administrators are not union posts. And so there's really no negotiations process that we can go through with the administrators.
And, you know, there's a little bit of, there's some nervousness when you end up on an admin contract, and, gosh, you know, the board could just say, no, we're not going to renew your contract. You know, so I think once you step out of the master agreement world, you know, you are on a not-as-solid-ground when it comes to knowing that your contract's going to be renewed or not, so.
On the other hand, you can negotiate yourself, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. There are pros and cons, but I think being able to tell folks, hey, we do want you back, is valuable now.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I think.
That's the whole kit and caboodle for personnel?
Think that's it, yep.
Hey, Nick, good luck.
I'm done.
Policy.
Policy.
Len, do you want to do next meeting? When's our next meeting?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, May 1st, Wednesday in May?
Is it the first, I think?
Oh, is it really?
Yeah, I think so.
It is.
Okay, yeah, May 1st at 6:00, because we have some things that we didn't get to tonight.
I think that's fair, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna squeeze me.
Try to.
So now I think I'm really done.
That's our next meeting.
That's what I was going to ask you.
I think you're good now.
I am good. So policy, I would like, I'm going to lump them. I would like to make a motion to adopt B-10, B-11, and B-12.
Perfect.
You want to make the motion to do it?
I did.
Okay, I'll second it. I haven't seconded anything.
Discussion?
It still says Shrewsbury School District on it, the one that we received.
And it's likely that we just have the same one in the packet.
Yeah, they probably just.
We'll make sure when we post it that it'll.
Yeah, that is correct.
Other than that, no comment. And it still doesn't say anything about vape, but I guess.
I looked it up, and in the definition, if you, the definitions of tobacco products.
Yes, it is in the definition.
It has a whole.
So should we add that in the?
It has the reference where.
It is down in the reference.
Yeah, whatever the Vermont code, that BSA 100, 4A.
Other forms of tobacco.
In that first line.
And we couldn't add it now unless we voted no to adopt and start it over.
Oh.
But that, so that first line in the first footnote that says the term tobacco product is defined in 7BSA 10014, that's where the list.
It lists quite a list of.
And this is just some of them, then?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Correct.
Seems like it would be a.
It'd be better if it was just gone altogether.
Or if it was in there, because that's the current, I think, issue that, I don't know. I'd have to ask the principal and the administration, maybe Jody. Are you seeing vape as, you know, vape pens as an issue more than, you know, cigarettes or?
Stogies.
Yeah, I mean, I would say vapor, I think, is an issue, but as long as it's apparent within the definition, I would assume that we're still covered by that policy.
Because in the, under legal references, you know, it just references the 101.
Sure, but you have a quote. You're quoting it, and it's not in the quote.
I understand.
Len?
Not to complicate it, but.
True.
I just wanted to say that in the past, because it's a state statute, and it tends to, the state tends to be somewhat flexible as things change, that as long as we say we're following state statute, then basically that covers us. And if there's ever a question, you can go to that state statute. And, I mean, we do that in several of our policies where it's state law. And it doesn't make sense for us to put it in our policy when the state may change it if they so choose.
I totally agree.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, that it's not clean right now.
Yeah, it's not clean, because it does quote, and it quotes what it says, and if.
Well, we can, we can.
So I don't know how.
The other part is just like in the, under definitions, under three tobacco products, has the same meaning set forth and as amended from time to time. So it, that actually implies that like, no matter how, like, when our policies date, like, they could change the tobacco policy tomorrow, and that, I think that third clause still covers what, if they add something new to it, that wouldn't be in our definition. Would it be better to have that paragraph, just that footnote, gone altogether? I don't disagree with you.
You can, you would have to.
I know how I can vote.
We would have to take the second back in the motion and split them up.
I was just going to say, because there's three pieces at the moment.
Yeah, I think it's pretty important to have vaping included. I mean, we're not constrained to solely what the state statute is, right?
Well, we're using the state's definition of tobacco product, and in, which is a very comprehensive list. I think in my draft, I actually have a draft email where I almost sent you the thing.
Well, no, you did.
Can we add to that? Can we have something above and beyond that state statute?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We have to, we have to follow state statute, but we could have a local policy that's a little more restrictive.
Right. If I'm understanding your point, you think that we need to cover vaping, and I completely agree.
Yeah, because I think, I'm just thinking from the perspective of a student who's, you know, for whatever reason being reprimanded, go, it doesn't say, it doesn't say it.
I would say, in the interest of, in the interest of time, if we want to send it back, let's send it back and have the discussion there.
Yeah.
So maybe.
I rescind my second.
So that means I have to rescind my motion?
Yeah. And then just, oh, you're fine. And then just group the other ones. I think the problem is that we also just don't, if we, if the one that's in the packet might be, might not have any of that.
So I will make a motion to adopt B-11 and B-12.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on those?
No.
No.
So all those in favor?
I'm so in favor.
Opposed? Abstained? Perfect.
Okay, so now do B-10.
So now I will make a motion that we send B-10 back to policy.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
No discussion. All those in favor?
Okay, we did it.
All those opposed? Abstained? Beautiful. Okay, now for the next batch. One, oh, we only got one for a second read? One, so I'd like to make a motion to rescind, this is officially rescind, D-16, which is, my apologies.
Health insurance portability.
Portability and accountability.
Oh, is that what it is? I still don't have it. Oh, there it is. Health Insurance and Portability Accountability Act. Oh, that's HIPAA. Oh, which is covered by state and federal. That's why it's no longer required as a policy.
Which is required to follow it. I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? And now I will make a motion to send B-13, which was formerly D-11, and B-14, which was formerly D-20, for a first reading to adopt those as policies.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Our next policy meeting will be next Tuesday?
4/16. Right?
Yes.
5:30.
B&amp;G.
Hey, I'll give you Timeth update.
Lovely.
We are getting the lease signed. We have one last thing to do, which is public notification of the asbestos plan. So the plan is to start using the space on the 22nd when we return from break.
Yeah, I was in there today having meetings, and it was distracting. We need more space in that building.
Next B&amp;G meeting is also the 22nd at 5:00 p.m.
Community engagement.
So we were going to meet tonight, but.
Personnel bumped you.
And we got bumped, and that's fine. We're gonna just now go to our regular meeting, which is going to be the second board meeting of the month, so that means May 15th. And we're going to meet at 6:00. You know, we need to do, we did our reorg in terms of who's chair, me. But we are going to review, I had, I've gone through, and I've listed all of the actions and goals or activities that the community engagement has done for the last, like, five years. I think it's going to go out since 2019, so just to see, you know, the pattern. And the thing I noticed is that the community conversations were going very strong till COVID, and then they just kind of fell off. And so, you know, that'll be one of the things we'll discuss is how to do that, how to bring those back, because I think that's a critical thing that we're hearing that people are missing. And whatever else, you know, the board, I mean, the committee comes up with in terms of, in terms of ideas of things that we want to continue doing. So that'll be May 15th at 6:00, right here, I guess.
Lovely, thank you very much. Negotiations, we are still negotiating. That's about it. Finance.
I've got pay orders if you want me to read them.
I would love it.
I'll start with this one. Payroll warrant, FY '24. Regular payroll warrant in the amount of $653,925.22. I'd ask that we have a motion to approve the payroll warrant as read.
I'll make that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Now I have pay orders, one from the general fund in the amount of $240,000, two, let me start over, in the amount of $240,123.62. Another from the general fund in the amount of $22,602.12. After-school program in the amount of $1,812.81. Lunch program in the amount of $4,208.14. That totals $268,746.69. No student activities expenses. So I would ask that a motion to approve as read.
I shall make that motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Everybody's good?
Awesome, thank you. Finance, we're meeting end of May, right?
May 1st at 6:00.
Oh, is it May 1st? Six, but Len wants to start at 6:00.
Yeah, we're piled up, which we can move it. It's okay to move finance.
So the only thing we want to do is reorg, so we could bump it.
Let's just push that to another time.
So what are we doing?
We'll find another time, and we'll warn that. We hadn't warned it yet, so we'll find another time. Okay, great.
Okay, other legal business? Do you have anything?
I do have one thing. Let's, I would ask that the board make a motion to authorize the vice chair to sign the pay orders and payroll warrant.
I will make that move. Well, someone else make that motion.
I will make that motion.
All those in favor? Okay, that's everybody.
That's the only other legal business I have.
Are we doing an executive session? Or, sorry, agenda building?
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry. When is the next negotiation meeting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Four. Four.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send you a link, Stephen and Len.
Okay, thanks.
So now agenda building. What's on our, what's on the schedule?
On our schedule, we've got student wellness policy update, and then we have a pre-K and an after-school update.
And we're here?
And we are here. I think those three things will do a pretty good amount.
This night's a little long.
Yep.
Yeah, and there's going to be something else that'll show up, probably.
Probably.
Brian, do you want to talk about the salary piece for the administrators? Or no, no, we don't need to until we get the other stuff, nevermind.
No, but we, who knows? We'll see. We might be able to, we might not, but that's a good thought, Len. Okay. We'll get the agenda moving, and if there are things that you think of, you can always let Josh know or Andrea know or let me know, and as we build the agenda, we can work things in if there's something that just didn't occur to us tonight, so.
And I appreciate everybody's time. Tonight was one of the longer meetings I've had in a while.
Good questions, good discussion.
And it was worth it. I really appreciate all that time. So in that note, if we're all good, we're going to be by consensus. We're going to be done.
Executive session, yeah.
No need, no need tonight.
No need tonight.
I think we can, we can do that.
Hold it to the next one.
We can do the contract work with the next personnel meeting and pick it up then.
Lovely, all right.
Okay, thank you, everybody.